Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, November 19th, 2018. I would like to call to order the Wommet Park District Committee of the Whole Meeting. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Abbott?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletin's not with us. Commissioner Olbani?
Here.
Commissioner Shelley?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We're hoping Commissioner Pelletin will be joining us here shortly. I'd like to mention one change on our agenda for this evening. We will be having the Village of Wommet engineers present prior to recognizing any visitors from the audience. We feel like they'll be able to give some information that might be able to answer people's questions prior to the comments section. That being said, we'll move forward with communications and correspondence. In our packet, we had many communications and correspondence from residents, from other people around our community commenting primarily on the Centennial Prairie Garden and the importance of that and the existence of that being very good part of stormwater management as also habitat for natural birds and insects and butterflies and things like that around the area. So that was in here. I don't believe there were any other communications regarding any other issues related to this. Does any other commissioners have any information or communications they'd like to share?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move forward to the Village of Wommet's presentation. This evening, Burke Engineers will be presenting, and we have Mr. Darren Olson who will be starting us off with where we are to date. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Darren Olson with Christopher Burke Engineering. I'm going to give you a brief background of our neighborhood storage project and also talk about, a little bit more specifically about Community Playfield and Centennial Park as well. So tonight, I will give you a brief background on the Neighborhood Storage Project itself, give you a general overview of the project, how we got here, and then talk a little bit more detail of Community Playfield versus Centennial Park and some movement forward. Some background on the project and some history. Our history with this project starts in January 2014. I know the Village's history and Bridge's history, and this starts much before that. But in January 2014, the Village hired Christopher Burke Engineering to analyze the drainage on the west side of the Village. And the west side of the Village is essentially from Ridge Road going west. It's a separate storm sewer system. And due to flooding that had been occurring quite a bit, specifically an event like the April 2013 storm event where there was a lot of impact, the Village asked us to move forward in analyzing that. So our first step in that process in March of 2014 was to have a series of public open houses, outreach to the public, talking about flooding that they had experienced. And as we began to dissect the problem, wanted to take in their public consideration, and then began moving forward very quickly on analyzing what is the cause of flooding on the west side of the Village and what are some potential flood reduction projects that we can recommend to the Village. In January of 2015, Christopher Burke Engineering came back to the Village with the findings of our study and really focused on three alternatives. And you'll hear me talk about alternatives in this presentation. We looked at three. The first was a conveyance option. The second was centralized storage. And the third was what we called neighborhood underground storage. Talk a little bit more in the next slide about more specifics of those. But after that, after some discussions with the Village, the Village asked another engineering company, Stan Tech, to do a value engineering and a refinement analysis of that to make sure that the project that they were going to look at and ultimately decide on was a correct project for the Village. So the Village hired Stan Tech in 2017, and over the next year, worked with Stan Tech. And then finally, in April 2018, at the Village Board Meeting, the Village decided to move forward with alternative three, which as you see above, was the Neighborhood Underground Storage Project. Shortly thereafter, the Village sought out proposals to do the engineering, and in August 2018, engaged Christopher Burke Engineering and Baxter and Woodman to begin the project design for this alternative. Taking a step back, want to go over a little bit the background of the project, of what we call the base project, and this is alternative three. And what you see here is an aerial photograph of the west side of the Village. And the blue lines are the storm sewers. Everything, if you're looking at this north is up, the blue lines are the storm sewers that are existing. And really, the thing to take away from this is all the water that falls on the west side of the Village must be conveyed in these large storm sewers and taken over to what we see in yellow there at the far left side of the screen, which is the Lake Avenue Pump Station. All that stormwater runoff must be taken to Lake Avenue Pump Station and pumped out to the north branch of the Chicago River. The project that the Village Board decided on was really, the idea was to capture and store this water safely, closely to where it fell. So rather than having to pipe the water all over the west side of the Village, we would find some open areas, convey this excess stormwater to those areas, and store it there safely. The three areas that we landed on were, and I'll start on the north side, farthest north is Thornwood Park. That's called Phase Three. On the far right, which is the southeast side, is Centennial Park. On the south side is Hibbard, and then there's some relief storm sewers as well. So I'll briefly go into each one of these, starting with alternative, with Phase Three, and that is Thornwood Park. And under this, under this phase, we would be, again, taking water that falls closely to Thornwood Park. We'd be bringing it to Thornwood Park where it would be stored underground safely and then able to get back into the existing Village system as capacity freed up in that system. So we'll see a couple of numbers here. On the left side, we see this term acre feet of storage. That's an engineer's volumetric way of tracking stormwater. And an acre foot of stormwater is one acre of land a foot deep. So that gives people an idea of how much water that is. Here at Thornwood Park, we are proposing approximately 10 and 1/2 acre feet of storage underground, and that would be stored, the top of that storage vault, we'll call it, would be anywhere between two to three feet below the existing ground.
As you might imagine, I'll have, the question is actually to hold them.
Yeah, let's, I think, let him go through the presentation and then ask questions, if that's okay?
Sure.
So the, in the previous slide, we saw, you know, a tentative footprint of that in Thornwood Park. Moving on to the following location, and this is Hibbard Park. The amount of stormwater volume here is approximately 10 acre feet of stormwater storage, very similar to Thornwood Park. We don't have any schematics to show here because, as we understand, there's, the architect, Woodhouse Tanucci, is looking at a couple of options here, and so we're, again, in all these, very much in a conceptual phase, but this one, not even at a point where we could show, you know, blocks on a piece of paper. And finally, the last phase, or the last area, was the, was Centennial Park, which is really the purpose of being here tonight, is to talk about where we started off a couple of years ago and then got approved by the Village this past year, which was looking at Centennial Park. And then the desire, the initial feedback that we've heard is to potentially move that storage area from Centennial Park to Community Playfield. So as we began this early analysis of looking at these two options, we looked back at Centennial Park. This was the original one that was in the, what we'll call the base project. And what we see in the aerial to the right is the, the pink is the storm sewer alignment where we'd be bringing water in to an underground storage basin located under the ground at Centennial Park. That underground storage area would locate, would be located between the buildings, the aquatic facilities there, and between that and the prairie, that is, the existing prairie that's located there. A little bit more stormwater storage required at this location, approximately 12 acre feet. And the depth below the existing ground, if you recall in the last slides, that the depth below the existing ground was two to three feet. Here is, we're going down much deeper just because the existing ground at this site is so much higher. So this, this site has some pros and some cons. A pro is that it does provide flood reduction for the, for the neighbors and the residents that are in the immediate vicinity. Another pro is that, as our very preliminary layout shows, we were able to place the storage there and avoid the existing stormwater detention and prairie area, so there would be no impact to that area as part of this project. But there were some cons. In this site, the ground is much higher, and so in order, in order to put in our stormwater storage, we'd have to dig that material out, store it, and then put it back, which made for a much tighter working area for us from a construction standpoint. There's very limited space to expand this facility. If we wanted to reach out to other areas and try to bring in additional stormwater, this site provided very little ability to do that. And then based on some initial feedback from, from the Park District and residents, there was the desire to take into consideration Community Playfield. So that is our, our next slide is looking at Community Playfield, and we did have two different alternatives for this. The first is what we call alternative one. It provides, again, the same flood reduction benefits to the adjacent residents. So from a flood reduction standpoint, it is the same as Centennial Park. As you can see here, in the aerial that we see, the storm sewers are now leading rather than towards Centennial Park, are, they're leading towards the north to store this water safely in Community Playfield. And we're able to store that water in Community Playfield without as much constraint as we had in Centennial Park. The existing ground is not as high, so we don't need to dig down as deep to place the flood storage. There's also, as you can see from the aerial, more open space. And so what we see here is a footprint, a very similar sized footprint, about 2.2 acres, with the ability to expand it slightly. But we're able to do this with a lot more space for construction staging, for potential expansion. This alternative here happens to be, alternative one is of all of them, actually the least expensive alternative. But it does require an easement to, as we can see from the purple lines, we're having to take this water from Wommet Avenue and bring it north into Community Playfield, and that would, will require potentially an easement for that storm sewer to get from the, from the roadway into Community Playfield. The next alternative for Community Playfield was what we call alternative 1A. Just by the name, you can tell it's very, very similar. The footprint at Community Playfield is identical, so we're still looking, you know, in the range of 2.2 acres within the open space at Community Playfield. Again, this is, provides the same flood reduction benefit, provides the same available open space for us to be able to do this work. One of the pros, and I forgot to mention on the previous slide, there are some drainage issues at Community Playfield that we were made aware of. In doing a project like this, where we're working primarily in drainage, we're able to take care of some of those drainage problems as part of a project like this. So that would definitely be something, Community Playfield, that would be a benefit, was that we can wrap in some of these drainage improvements into our overall project. This one, the purple line runs around on Wommet and then runs north to come back into Community Playfield, so we would not need an easement from any of the adjacent residents. But that longer storm sewer run does result in a greater cost, and so this alternative is more expensive than the previous one, but still provides the same flood reduction benefits, same ability to expand if necessary. So we took it a step further, and rather than just looking at aerials, and you have a, an 11 by 17 of this, because I realize it's very, very difficult to read, but we took it a step further and began to assign some criteria, some metrics, as to how we begin to look at the decision, or a decision between Centennial Park and Community Playfield. So in this decision matrix, on the far left side, we have categories, and those are the categories of different types of criteria that we looked at. So we've got some that are general criteria regarding the flood storage. We have some regarding construction, and some regarding how it would affect the adjacent neighborhood. So as we, then, the next column is those criteria. We have, you know, area for the, for the basin itself. And then as we move further along to the right, we've got, you know, Centennial Park, which was the original location, Community Playfield's alternative, that's 3-1, is alternative one, and Community Playfield 3-1A is alternative 1A. And so we look at each of these three scenarios under these criteria, you know, for area of the basin, for, for volume, that, you know, they're all very, very similar for benefits that they're providing to adjacent residents. We're beginning to move our way down from the top to bottom of this matrix, you know, they all provide very, very similar benefits. And we ranked things as pros or cons for each one. And then if there was a strong preference, we would shade it green. So as where you see green in this matrix, that is a preference of one alternative over another. So we begin to move our way down, you know, they all have similar flood reduction benefits. They all can be gravity drained. They all have some sort of storm sewer connection, and that's where we see the first benefit of Centennial Park, is that it's a much cleaner storm sewer connection over Community Playfield 3-1, but not over 3-1A. The, as we move further down, potential to expand. And as we're getting down to, at the end of the first category, we start to see then this, a large preference, as we get through the criteria of leaning towards Community Playfield. We're able to much more easily expand that. You know, we talk about potential expansion of the basin. If we wanted to help out additional residents, we're able to do that much more easily in Community Playfield. Permitting requirements. Community Playfield is not next to either a Cook County or an IDOT roadway, so we're able to work in those storm sewer systems a little bit more easily. So that's a preference for Community Playfield. As we get on to the second category, which is talking a lot about construction, again, we see here a very strong preference for Community Playfield. This is driven primarily by the site constraints for Centennial Park. We're avoiding, as I said before, we're avoiding the prairie area, so that puts a fixed perimeter on the north side. We have buildings on the south side, and then we have this high ground in between that we're trying to put the flood storage in. So it makes for a very, very tight site, very difficult to expand that site if we wanted to. And just from a construction standpoint, makes it more costly and more difficult and take longer as well. So as we're working our way down, we see we've got more overburden there. Tree impacts are very, very similar, so that wasn't a strong deciding factor either way. We get down to construction duration, and one of the points, as we get into project cost, is looking at the, the cost of each one of the alternatives, which we did do a very preliminary, high-level cost estimate. Community Playfield 3-1, so alternative one, happens to also be the least expensive out of all of them. It also would take the shortest construction duration as well. So finally, moving to the, to the last category, talking about how it would impact the park site and neighbors. You know, there, we're locked in, and we're putting the underground storage at a fixed location. At Centennial Park, the ability, if we ever wanted to, or if the Park District ever wanted to expand a building north into that area, that's one of the last open space areas within the Centennial Park. Generally, it'd be difficult to do that on top of one of these flood storage or vault facilities. That would not be the case. At Community Playfield, there's more open space. For whatever expansion would be needed, there'd be more open space at Community Playfield. In both cases, there are existing homes next to the, next to the site, so that would be a wash either way. And then finally, you know, just on some initial feedback we've heard, there was a strong preference for Community Playfield. So we have a total of 20 different criteria here, and as we totaled it up, we see the red box that your eye naturally gravitates towards that alternative one. It's the least expensive, it has the most, you know, green benefits, and also, when we did the pros and cons, it also ranked the highest. It was tied with the other community, alternative 1A as well. But those two, I mean, clearly were, were the strong preference when looking at under, you know, a couple of these different ways. So a summary of this comparison, Community Playfield provides more cost-effective underground storage because there is greater space for construction activities. There's less excavation required. The existing ground that we're, we're digging up is not as, as high in community. The underground storage at Community Playfield can also be built larger, much more easily. And granted, that must fit within whatever planning or, planning that the Park District would have for the property, but it is much less expensive to expand that at Community versus Centennial. Construction at Community also will have less site impacts. There is more open space at Community, and so to put underground storage there, there is additional areas to be able to, if you had to do facilities construction at Community, there'd be other spaces, whereas at Centennial, it's taking up really one of the last green spaces there. There's also the, the added benefit at Community of being able to solve some drainage problems that currently exist on the site, creating a win-win situation. And then finally, with all of these, as we're just, you know, really in the beginning stages, the data collection stage of all of this, there's, there's some things we're going to have to work out at Community, and the easement is one of them. There's going to be tree removal we'll have to take a look at, construction scheduling. So there's, we're in the beginning process, but there's certainly going to be things that we're going to have to look at for all of these. So our next steps, and we're happy tonight to talk about, you know, all aspects of the project, where we're at, from a design perspective. And then, you know, if ultimately, if Community Playfield, it was clearly the one that on paper looked the best, if it were to be selected, we'd have to look at things like acquiring an easement. And we're going to be continuing discussions with the Park District throughout all of this. We will eventually, with the Village, move on to a phase called optimization, where we will take the, the project that we, we have at hand and look to optimize that to help the most number of residents within the Village for the least cost. And so that'll be really one of the next phases that we're looking at, is this optimization phase of how can we help the most amount of residents for the least amount of money? And then finally, once all of that is done, we will be moving into 30% design. That is the, that is the engineering presentation for the evening, but happy to answer all questions. We've got staff here that can help out as well.
I think what I'd like to do at this point is recognize our visitors and have any comments from them, and then we'll have our, our discussion under new business where we can fully ask questions of you guys at that point, if that's okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Okay with everybody? All right. So just a reminder to everyone, anyone that would like to speak to us, we'd love to have you come comment. If you could just please be respectful and keep your comments to the topic at hand, and you have three minutes to address us. So would anybody like to address the board at this time? Yes, sir?
Hi. This meeting is late. It's years late. It's late upon late. The fact that the Park Board didn't engage the Village publicly about these plans years ago when parks were on the table is beyond me. In April, the Village Board made the decision to use park storage. Why this board waited seven months to conduct this meeting has awful optics. At best, it looks like the Park Board doesn't care about the plight of the flooding of west side residents. At worst, it looks like this board may be dead set on delaying or even derailing this project. This isn't the first time the Park Board hasn't engaged the Village publicly, and I see it as a problem that doesn't necessarily come from only one side. There seems to be an intergovernmental cooperation problem in several areas lately. It happened when the Park Board affirmatively refused to engage in the Village Bike Plan. So now, our $80,000 Village Bike Plan has no way to determine how pedestrians, dog walkers, bikes, and moms with strollers run between Gilson Park and the rest of the Village. It's a disservice to the community that the Park Board be characterized as simply stewards of the parkland. The Board's constituents are not the parks, but the residents of Wommet. 100% overlap. And some of them are in dire need of services, so please make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, like, can I comment on that? Okay. Hi, Jeff. So there's been a lot of what-ifs with regard to this plan, and as much as I certainly applaud the Village's efforts to address stormwater, and it's been a difficult one to wrap their arms around, they've had a lot of meetings, and I've even heard some, some idea that somehow or another, the Village meetings were the place for the Park Board to come and have this discussion. And I just want to emphasize, first off, that this is where we talk about the parks. I did go to Village Board meetings. I had my three minutes at the podium. That's not exactly the place, nor can I speak for the entire Board when I'm at a Village meeting, as their ideas for park usage or the parkland is brought up. I can't, I can't, like, negotiate in front. So we're having these meetings here. Certainly, my fellow commissioners, there's been a lot of discussion about how to move forward with this. There was no invitation by the Village for us to engage in these discussions. It was something that we had to independently come up with. Certainly, local, any governments do take time, and I'm just happy that we're getting started in this. So, you know, I'm coming here with the spirit of listening and discussing and trying to solve this problem. So I can understand perhaps if you feel frustrated that it should have happened earlier, but...
Sorry, your, your three minutes are up. Sorry, there's not a back and forth.
I haven't, I didn't spend three minutes talking. I didn't realize this was going to be a back and forth.
I think he was just commenting on your comments.
Well, I have more comments.
Sorry, it's not a discussion.
We have discussion, though.
Well, I simply wanted to respond to, I think we're here to begin.
I'd just like to make a brief comment and response. So, you know, I, I don't want, we don't necessarily need to rehash the past, but I do think there would have been an opportunity to hold joint public meetings, and the Park Board certainly could have engaged, the Village and the Village could have engaged the Park Board in having such meetings. You know, the, the use of public, of using the parks as storage has been on the table for, I think, 10 years, and this wasn't a surprise, so.
And yet, here we are. So, okay.
So I'm just asking, please, like, make sure this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address us? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Charlotte Edelman. Thank you all for having this hearing. I sent you an email today. Some of you may have seen it. I live at 232 Longdale, by the way, and I just wanted to really read to you, this is sort of a, an interesting thing that we're here, because I want, we were, I was here before, you might say, several years ago, maybe it was a decade ago, asking for permission to create a prairie in Centennial Park, and the park, your group, the Park Board, gave me that permission. And it was a wonderful experience. I think the, I loved working with the Park District employees, and I think they enjoyed working with me, and it was a positive experience in every way, and I think the prairie is a beautiful thing. One of the things that people forget to mention is its service as a carbon sink, absorbing and sequestering CO2, and that's something that I think all of us should be thinking about very carefully. The UN just came out with a big report that we're on the brink of disaster if we don't start doing that. The New York Times just ran an article about the latest scientific studies that using natural processes like prairies, for example, or wetlands and so forth, are now, they can absorb, offset a car or each, so that, I mean, that is like the coming thing. natural processes like prairies, for example, or wetlands and so forth, are now, they can absorb, offset a car, each, so that, I mean, that is like the coming thing, is going to be having natural carbon sinks, which a Park District is imminently qualified to really create. And maybe we'll cover Wilmette with gorgeous carbon sinks and have beautiful flowers and insects and birds and everybody, it's gonna be just wonderful. And I did, I don't know how much of my time I have left, probably none, but I did look up, in 2012, according to the Park District Board's minutes, it was recognized that the Village of Wilmette had provided, had given an award to the Park District Board, and, for the prairie. And it was proudly shown to the Board by Mr. Wilson, perhaps you remember that moment well. Anyway, it was something I think that is relevant to the decision being made, even though I know you're gonna be deciding on more practical matters and getting awards. Nonetheless, it was recognized by the Village of Wilmette that this prairie was worthy of receiving an award. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just forgot to mention that with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District's bad decision about the easement, which is interfering with a contract, with a lease with the Village of Wilmette, as a retired attorney, I would recommend that you file a lawsuit against MWRD for violating, breaking the lease.
Thank you.
I'll get after the evening, I guess. I'm Edie Raul, I live at 2710 Hawthorne, and I'm here both as a resident of one of the areas very closely affected, as well as president of the Little Garden Club of Wilmette. And I wanna thank the Board and the group that has worked here today to address one of the questions that we raised back in August, was what criteria would be used to make the determination? And I thought it was a very thoughtful presentation. Will this be put up for people within the community to see this presentation?
It is already on the Village's website, yes.
It is already, great, thank you. And again, we are very grateful that you have taken the time. We look forward to the decision that we hope you will make this evening in favor of using the Community Playfield rather than Centennial. And we would also love to be able to work with the Park District to help make the Community Playfield a more effective sink, both for carbon as well as for water, with regard to planting additional prairie plants in that area, because we have found that the detention pond in Centennial has been made much more effective, 'cause that's a combination, a very good example, of gray and green infrastructure working together to actually absorb an increased amount of water and bringing it into the water table where it belongs. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I ask, are there measurable metrics with regard to these, the rain gardens is what I've always called them, in terms of their ability to do a better job of absorbing water? Are there measurable metrics for that?
There are measurable metrics, I don't have those available. I believe the Water Reclamation District actually has a lot of data with regard to that. Anecdotally, when that detention pond area was originally installed, there were basically no native plants, it was grass, the Park District had to maintain it, mow it and other things. It also used to flood all the way up to the top. We have pictures of neighbors' kids kayaking in that particular area. To the kids' regret, it no longer floods, because even with the heavy rains that we had in this period, it never filled up again, because the plants are helping to pull that water into the table. So it's a very effective use, and I think that we could also, and would love to have an opportunity to work with the Park District to help enhance the Community Playfield as well, so that it can absorb an even increased amount of water to help support and supplement the gray infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, and I'll ask Bert the same question.
I was gonna say, I think the engineers should be able to answer that, too.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Moore, I've been a Village resident since 1976. I live within walking distance of Highcrest Middle School, I have four daughters, the youngest of whom will be 40 years old tomorrow. So, I can't tell you how much time I have spent in this area of Community Playfield, and it floods like nobody's business. I mean, it's underwater! It's underwater all the time! I'm sure that the local people who live around here, who live around this area, will be thrilled that something will be done to alleviate the flooding there and to help them. And, as I said, my evidence is strictly anecdotal as a resident. Community Playfield seems to have all kinds of things in its favor. I can tell you that I'm sure that all the neighbors who boarded that Playfield are gonna be thrilled when it no longer floods. So, that's it, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? I think we'll be moving along to New Business. At this time, we will be having a discussion as a Board about the Village Stormwater Project and the presentation that we just heard, and we will be asking questions of the engineers, I'm assuming. So, is there a Commissioner that would like to start?
I just got a couple of questions.
I think Brian's gonna have quite a few, so...
One should be really quick question, then one might be a little bit longer, but the difference between 1A and 1B for Community Playfield, is that strictly just the sewer cost, the $4.5 million?
That's correct, I can get back to... Yes, and the sewer, the proposed sewers are shown in purple here, and while on a map of this scale, it does not look like a lot of additional sewer, it's thousands of feet of additional, fairly large diameter storm sewer, and that's what drives that cost difference.
Okay, all right. And then, maybe a little bit harder question is, what was the attractiveness of Centennial before and ahead of Community Playfield?
I think it dealt with the proximity to the residents that flood, the ones in this area, there's Wilshire, which is just on the bottom part, and we were trying to take care of those people at the location that was closest to them, that was really the theme of this project, was trying to capture the water closest to where it fell. And, again, when we looked at it back in 2014, 2015, we were still at a 30,000-foot level, and then we're still kind of there, but we've been able to refine that analysis, and especially, you know, given the feedback that we received, we're able to steer it, or at least begin to look at Community Playfield.
Okay.
That all for you?
That's it.
Okay, yeah. I thought it was a great presentation, so thank you very much, it was very thorough. I'm curious as to maybe the number of homes or the radius that all of these different sites will cover? I mean, is it about the same amount, or, I'm obviously the Community Playfield one, but versus Centennial?
Yes, the, what we were able to do is the, we're talking about flood reduction benefits, the benefits are identical between Centennial and Community, and we're able to do that just by rerouting the storm sewers around.
The number of residents?
Correct.
Or the square foot coverage?
The number of residents that are benefited by the project. So we're able to take really the areas that flood, the Wilshires, area along Wilmette, Meadow, whether we take that water to, as shown here, Community, or we bring it south to Centennial, those residents, the benefits are identical.
And are there, and then, as far as, you know, we did this at West Park, are there guarantees that there really will be no water in their homes due to the storms?
Just by the nature of storms, we can't guarantee. What we do is we design for a certain storm event.
Right.
And as engineers, we like to use, well, I should say that there's terms that are used, like the 10-year storm event and the 100-year storm event, and...
We have every year.
Yes, exactly. And I didn't wanna get too much into the weeds on what each one of those means, but in this case, we've designed all of the projects for a certain level of protection, and that's what, that was our benchmark.
Do we have data on the West Park and the success rate of that? Do we, no?
I do not.
I don't know.
The, one thing I will say, there is a...
Bridget? Yeah, Bridget, maybe Bridget, no?
Before Bridget gets up there, I'll point out that West Park is not storm sewer, it's sanitary. So, they're not exactly the same project.
That's a great...
However, as Bridget will tell you, that reduces the load on the storm sewer as well, so...
I have it on my computer, I can give you the exact statistics on the number of rain events since West Park has been operational, that it has helped relieve flooding for the residents. I can tell you, it has been wildly successful, though. Even in moderate rain events, we've had not only the backflow valve from the MWRD interceptor closed, so we're not serving as a detention area for our neighbors up and downstream of us, but West Park has held quite a bit of water, and I'll see if I can dig that out, but it's been probably over 10 storms since it was operational in 2015.
I wanted to ask, the size of the pipe, the sewer line that would run to Community Playfields, because I know that there's a sidewalk that runs in between the houses now, I think it's four or five feet wide, I don't know how much additional space you would need, and is it just for construction or for the actual pipe?
So, the pipes that we're talking about in this area are at least 60 to 72 inches in diameter, which would exceed the width of that sidewalk, and then when you throw in what it would require to actually construct that pipe and put it in the ground, it would exceed the size of that sidewalk, unfortunately.
And then, the location that you've chosen on Community Playfields, 'cause it's quite a large space, quite a large area, is one that has got, what is it, 15 enormous cottonwood trees. There are plenty of other areas where there are no trees, why is it that you chose that particular area?
So, this area is one where we know there is an existing drainage issue, and so that was part of it. It's also geographically closest to the areas that flood, where we're taking the storm water from and bringing it to Community. But there are, you know, these are just kind of boxes that are shown on the page right now, and if there's a desire to manipulate this, that's something we can certainly take into consideration.
The other thing is, I would assume that, since Meadow Drive, that's the only entrance and exit to Meadow, that you'd be able to arrange it so that residents could get in and out of their homes during construction?
Absolutely. Yes, we would take up half the road with construction and leave the other half open.
And then, I wanna point out to everybody that the time estimates for this, which are amazing, are only entail grass restoration. So, they'd be, you know, putting down soil and sod over the top. I assume it's sod.
Yes, and again, all the amenities like that and the final condition are things that we haven't even begun to discuss yet, but we'd certainly be willing to do that.
Yeah, I think that for our Board, the final condition is probably the most important thing.
Absolutely.
And so what are you trying to tell us?
No, I just wanted to point out that...
That the timeline will be longer than what's on here.
If we do anything other than sod, it's gonna take longer. And I don't know if that area, I mean, I know that area, they have soccer games, but I think that there are only a couple of fields affected.
Yeah, much of the area that the box is currently located in is actually, you know, surface storage for stormwater, so we do not put fields in there, so there, much of the area they'd work in wouldn't affect our operations, but some definitely would. Also, looking at the schedule in that matrix that they have, they're talking about doing it across the summer months when the school is not in operations, so that's not when we're doing our soccer programming, maybe the tail end of one of the seasons or the start of the next. What it would, for our operations, mostly impact is our summer camp programming, but we can move to other parts of the park or move to other facilities within town.
Okay.
I see the easement as a con on here, who do we have to get that from?
So that would likely be from one of the residents that live on Meadow Drive North.
Oh, from a private residence?
That's correct.
Oh.
How, so how wide would that easement need to be?
So, to construct a storm sewer of that size, you know, we would estimate 20 feet.
Do you have 20 feet between houses?
I was gonna say, is it 20 feet between houses?
There are, yes, yes.
Put that down, is one of the unknowns.
Okay. Yeah, do you guys both done with, done with questions? Brian and Stephanie, good? Okay. John, do you want to...
Okay, I had a handful of questions that I submitted to the Executive Director beforehand, some of them, one of them has already been asked, which was, you know, how is the West Park done, you know, from a metric standpoint? I guess the first question I have is, and there's a memo in our packet that talks about this, some of my questions, but my first question is, was there any kind of environmental impacts study done by the Village or anybody else for us to look at to see what the impact potentially is, you know, of this project, you know, on the parks?
So, part of, as we get further into the design, there's a lot of ways that we'll be looking at. We need to get permits from a variety of agencies, the IEP, MWRD, to name a few, so those, as part of that process, we'll be having to address the environmental issues of whatever sites we begin construction at. There's also ways to, as we begin to construct this to, or even design it, to look at how we can benefit the environment with green infrastructure. And so that's certainly something we're gonna look at at all these sites, is how can we incorporate green infrastructure into these? And finally, you know, before we do any work anywhere, we'd be taking soil borings, and the geotechnical engineer would, you know, report back to us the findings of those soil tests.
So, is the short answer no, that there hasn't been an environmental impact statement or study done thus far? And I guess my other follow-up question to that would be, one of my frustrations with this process has been it feels like everything is being done in the River Mirror, which is one of the criticisms by one of the residents, that it seems that we're doing an environmental impact statement or doing an environmental analysis after we've already made decisions about what we're gonna be doing. And it just seems that you should be thinking about the environment before you actually, before you actually go down the road and spend the time and effort and whatnot to figure out which location is best, just my point of view. The other question I had was, are there any of these facilities that have been done in Illinois, like, you know, like this?
There absolutely are, and what I'll do is I'm gonna advance forward a couple of, we brought some additional information in case a question like this did come up, and what I'll do is Paul Siegfried from Baxter and Woodman, he was the project manager on a very, very similar project, a larger project than this, in Northbrook. So I can have him come up, and if you have questions, you can certainly ask them of him on the Northbrook project.
You may have been the author of this, right? I found this today on the internet.
Are those the kind of vaults you have in mind for this project?
We have not made a decision yet on the type of vault that would be constructed, we're still in the preliminary stages, and...
That's fine, go back to John, I interrupted his question.
Sorry. Yes.
So, go ahead, you can describe it. I looked at your brief, you know, at the PowerPoint, but I don't know much about this topic, so...
So, this was a similar project that was designed to address residential flooding in the area. It's a 23.7 acre foot underground stormwater detention facility, it has a footprint of about two and a half acres, and it's 10 feet to 11 foot 4 inches tall, the structure itself. We ended up using Stormtrap for this project, but we did, you know, there are a lot of different underground storage options that you can use. They all have their advantages and disadvantages, and I think it's really just a decision that needs to be made based on the site itself, you know, every site is different, every project is different, priorities are different, so we would plan on doing the same type of evaluation. So we would plan on doing the same type of evaluation for this one.
So this, what I found today was dated March 9th of 2017. Was that after the completion of it?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and then I read that there was also one in Glenview. Was your firm involved in the one in Glenview at Lion Park?
My firm was. I was involved with that project, but not as deeply. I wasn't the project manager for that one. That one was a... That one's a little bit smaller. It's about, it's a little under five acre feet. It's a shorter construction period. Parking lot was constructed above it, but similar in concept.
Now, just, I mean, this isn't the park district's, you know, issue, but I, just out of curiosity, the cost of those other two projects seems, especially the bigger one?
Yes.
Based on what I read, was substantially lower than the price that we're looking at here. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, a lot of the costs, I think, are from our project, are coming from the storm sewer pipes.
The storm sewers, yeah, we have, we have longer distances we have to convey the water to get to our facilities than these two projects have.
The project in Northbrook, the actual underground storage part of the price was maybe a little more than half of the total cost.
And in the PowerPoint presentation, it talks about an irrigation system. Did that, did that end up happening?
That did end up happening, yes. And we actually...
That's a pretty cool idea. I mean, is that under consideration here?
It did.
It could definitely be an option, yep.
Especially for, you know, for community play field, it makes a ton of sense.
In Northbrook, we did get funding from MWRD for green infrastructure to add a water harvesting system to that project, too. So we're actually storing rainwater to use for the irrigation system.
I think that takes care of what I wanted to ask right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, you already went. Brian, do you want to...
Sure, go ahead. Commissioner Alvin's question. Since operational two years ago, the check valve has closed for 272 hours. That's stopping the backflow, and the tank has filled to various levels eight times.
And my other question that I posed to Steve was, was there ever any impact on our operations of West Park, you know, at West Park during a rain event or anything like that?
That's my knowledge.
You mean post-construction?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Once it's been up and running and it's operational, has there ever been, has there ever been a misstep in the, in the engineering or whatnot?
No, we're actually in a better place, because it's the turf field, so the water passes right through it. We're able to use it much quicker than when it was natural grass.
Okay. Is that all for you, John? Okay, Brian?
Sure. So these questions are probably going to be for Bridget and for Darrell, and it doesn't, it's okay if you don't have an answer to any of these questions, I'll just ask it. I don't really, and I don't have any agenda here. I think the only way, and again, I applaud the village in their attempts to solve this problem and forward-thinking, and the only way we're going to get there is if we work together, so I'll ask my questions. With regard to storage solutions, there's a number of different ways, and so I kind of want to go through the thought processes that arrived at this particular solution. So there's big underground tanks like West Park, and there's what I would call vaults, which is, really seems to be the solution. These are prefabricated vaults, and you often do put them underneath parking lots. And when I take a look at these sites, they all are blessed with rather large parking lots for, and, and I'm just wondering, was, has there been, was there any consideration in terms of diversifying the storage load by placing some of these tanks and these, and these vault situations under these parking lots?
We have not finalized the exact locations on any of the park sites where the storage is going, so that's all still, as part of our data collection process, we're still working through that.
They may involve, yes, they may involve premiums to do it under a parking lot, I think that's fair to say, right? I mean, as opposed to putting it underneath grass, so that would be a part of the decision process. So I'm just wondering, in order to make this consideration, you'd have to consider the costs, right?
The, the precast structural units are made to be placed under parking, that's the base unit.
Yeah.
So whether it's under grass or parking lot, it's the same.
Okay, so then I will just encourage you to explore those options, and let's enter into some discussions about what might be better and what might not be. Again, they're all sort of blessed with large, when you take a look at the aerial view, you see park, I'll pick on Centennial because it happens to be open, but the parking lot happens to be about the same size as the tank that you had proposed, so...
Yes.
Nothing's ever that simple. I, okay. There are other possible solutions of, some of them are, have merit and some of them maybe not. Permeable pavers, gravel storage, you just need a lot more gravel because there's only so many voids. I am interested in green technology, particularly rain gardens. Do you have, do you know that there are measurable metrics with regard to, have put in these rain gardens? I think they're great, but when we put them in 10 years ago, we didn't really have, we couldn't say what they were going to do, we just knew that they were better. Has it, has the technology, the science improved?
Oh, absolutely.
And do you, can you predict, is it, do, we're not, have been asked to measure up to some sort of code-required stormwater detention system here. This is simply to solve a problem. So you can take into consideration green technologies, additional storage by driving it into, right? And it's an open-ended question. I would just like to engage in a discussion, now that maybe not here, but I'd like that to be on the table.
Yes, and we plan as part of this project, you know, green infrastructure will be one of the things at the forefront of what we're looking at.
And so green would include, probably regarding with these grasses with the 12-foot roots and all that.
Yes, permeable pavers, yes.
Permeable pavers, yes.
Good idea.
Mr. Anderson loves his permeable pavers. So finally, surface storage as, as an option, I believe it really hasn't been on the table as a possibility. Community play fields just happens to be almost 40 acres, and a three-inch rainfall means that there's about 10 acres of, 10 acre feet of rain that falls in a, what, is it, we're talking 10-year rain, it's three inches? So therefore, 40 times three inches, 10 acre feet falls, happens to fall on the playfields. What a coincidence, that's the problem that we're trying to solve. So I don't, I don't, I'm not advocating that we leave three inches of rainfall all over the community play fields in one of these big events, but it does, it does raise questions of reducing this, potentially reducing the size, and I don't know what it means in terms of our playability. So is that sort of on the table? Is it worthy of discussion? Shall we come back to that? It's an open-ended question. Surface storage. Go for it.
Commissioner Abbott, back in 2014, 2015, when Chris Burke did the original hydraulic analysis of the west side and came up with the three alternatives that Darren briefly discussed, centralized detention was one of the options that was seriously considered, and there were two variations of that. One was underground and one was above-ground storage.
Sure.
At the time, our municipal services committee of the village board had public hearings, and there was pretty strong sentiment not to have above-ground storage. There was concern about everything you mentioned, the playability of the fields after the fact. There was a lot of safety concerns with the amount of, you know, student and pedestrian impacts.
Not four foot of depth, but...
I'm simply conveying the messages that were received by our committee. So in the end, the, again, the committee of the board determined that that would not be the best option, so...
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll think about that, but thank you. Some, some specific, I'm going to give you a lot of questions, and they're not in any particular order. What, and overflow conditions with these tanks. So we're talking about a 10-year rainfall, three-inch rainfall, but we know that we've gotten five-inch rainfalls, right? So do our, do our parks flood? Right now, we know it's flooding in the streets. So what happens when we say no more? Where does the, where does the extra water go? Do we just keep getting it?
No, that, that water will remain in the low spots in the streets.
So basically, the streets are the, but less so because we're taking more.
Correct. Yes, it will significantly benefit street flooding, but at some point, when it fills up, the water will...
Well, there's some mechanism for restriction of flow, once the tank is full, that we just say, we say no more.
It actually works by gravity because the streets are lower than the ground at the parks, and so the water, as it seeks its own level, it will, you'll find the streets.
Well, interestingly, so you talked about depth in here of the tanks themselves, and that's to what, the top of the tank? It must be, it's two, three feet?
That's correct.
Kind of curious about our staff recommendation as to what kind of overburden is, is that being set by the elevation that tanks need to be? Is that what we want them to be? And that's kind of an open-ended question.
It's set based on the elevations of the storm sewer system and where they need to be hydraulically.
Okay, so I would...
I think it really depends on, you know, what we already talked about, what we determine we want the amenities of the park to be when it's all put back together. If it needs to drop a couple feet to facilitate something on top of it, I think we should feel free to ask for that, but we haven't determined what that is at this point.
Fair enough, but just, that's an open-ended question. So yes, I thought some of these were kind of like, ooh, like, can we plant trees on two feet of soil?
No, not trees.
What?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, maybe, I don't, I don't know. We're not going to put 12-foot, 12-foot root systems down to that, but I, you know, I don't know what's going on top of the parks, and I'm not, we're not prepared, nobody's prepared to say, but open-ended question. Maintenance of these tanks, I'm going to call them vaults, really, that's a more accurate term. So these would be, right in here, that we talked about in the West Park, it was like, no, there was in the moment, it said it was 100 years. These were, that's the service life of concrete. And so, it's different kinds of parks. If you go to Central Park in New York, everybody knows Central Park, and in 100 years, Central Park will still be there, and it's not going to look a whole lot different than it does today. If you go to Millennium Park in 100 years, I don't know what it's going to look like. So kind of, for my lifetime, it's not, it's not a, it's a permanent park in my lifetime, but my grandchildren might be looking at something very different 100 years from now, like, what are we going to do? So same issue here with regard to down the road. And so I'm kind of curious about one of, the maintenance, the long-term implications, is the village, these are a lot of questions, and I'll, I'll slow down in a sec. Are we asking for a permanent easement here? I know that the village, actually, in their deliberations, were saying that this storage was not actually preferred to a conveyance. You know, the option one of conveyance is the best long-term solution. And so I'm wondering if in the next, let's say, 100 years, are we going to be working towards a conveyance solution and working our way out of a tank under these parks so that my children, great-grandchildren, or whatever, might have the full use of their parks back again in 100 years? And that then leads to my question, are we looking for a permanent easement? Can we put a sunset on this? Can we be working our way towards a, not needing these tanks down the road? It seems to me that, again, I heard the village trustees, and I would agree with that, ultimately, a conveyance would be the way to go. So that's a very complicated question, but it raises the issue of, has at least, of the easement, of some sort of easement, a sunset on that clause. So I, you can't answer it.
Yeah, I can speak to it.
I'm throwing that out there.
Yep, absolutely.
As that's going to be a concern, and that's going to be one of my questions. All right, sorry for the long question. I have, I'm really happy to be starting this, and when I presented to this board how I thought we should proceed, I was looking for, in what I consider very typical project phasing, well, go through program meetings and then go through each stage of design and with approval process along the way. What, how do you anticipate phasing this? Because right now, it's very, it's, it's too much, almost. And so each of these parks and tanks would be, there's a different phase, or there's a, what would come first? Which park?
As it's currently planned, Centennial and Community...
Is the first one.
They're named one, so they were thought to be the first.
Okay, which is what we're spending most of our time discussing, which is great. I don't want to lose track of the other two, but I would, I would prefer to. So as we go through programming, I would like to go through this programming, which we're doing tonight, of, of community play fields, putting off detailed discussions of programming and design for the other parks. I don't want to lose track of Hibbert in particular, or Thornwood, but I do, so we're establishing a priority in order here. Okay. I would like to see programming meetings, not just one, but several, open to the public so that they can digest what they're hearing and come back with concerns. It's not fair to ask people for some sort of rubber stamp tonight. And I would like to also see Goalt Hamilton then be, help us in the evaluation of both the programming information they receive and all of these designs as we go forward. That's not a question, it's just sort of a statement. You anticipate all of these to be gravity flow? No pumps are necessary?
At this time, that's correct, yes.
At this time, because we haven't told you to put the tanks deeper? Is that the...
We're just at, again, a very preliminary, you know, stage of our design as the footprints, and so as we have them laid out, they're gravity, but we don't know.
Yeah, what would trigger that? Low flow, you need greater flow, for instance?
If they have to go lower, then they would have to be pumped out.
Pumped out, or you're not getting the flow? Do you think you're getting the flow right now with, out of these?
We are, yes.
Okay, all right. If there were pumps, would they need emergency generate, emergency power?
Again, that's, that's a design feature that we're just not there yet.
I get it. So to my board, if pumps are required, if emergency power is required, there'd be a small facility that'd have to be built somewhere in order, and some maintenance on that. There is a base versus optimized storage on these plans, that was new to me. So what is, what, there's something behind that. What's the thinking here?
So as, and we can see here on the screen, the, the base project is the one that was contemplated as, in the village's April 2018 decision. As I discussed, one of our tasks is to try to optimize this base project to help as many people within the village as possible.
Sure.
And so that's what we're going to be trying to do, is to, part of that optimization is to expand the storage to store more stormwater and help more residents.
So it's simply, instead of a 10-year rainfall, could be 15 or whatever.
It's more helping different neighborhoods. So we're not trying, we're not trying to help the same people for greater storm events, we're trying to reach out to other areas within the village, on the west side of the village.
Because there were some areas that weren't going to see much improvement.
That's correct.
Larger tanks would then hopefully cast a wider net in terms of...
That's absolutely correct.
I see what you're doing. So that's really your call.
I just wanted to add to anybody watching from home or the audience here who might be curious about the performance of the neighborhood storage project and the whole concept of optimization. That is a big discussion that our village board will have likely at a committee of the whole meeting, either in December or January. We'd invite everybody to attend, but at that meeting, we'll give a detailed presentation on each of these storage areas and the additional pipe and storage facilities that could be enhanced in order to help maximize the performance and the number of people benefited. So that's another whole discussion that's yet to come.
Okay. The footprint doesn't, the footprint doesn't seem to get that much bigger. Are you going any deeper?
No, we don't need to go any deeper, it's just we're able to gain, you know, more storage.
It's enough.
Yeah, it's enough, yep.
We used to mention that the community play fields would be Phase 1. Which of the other two would be Phase 2? Do you, is there, you know, I probably should know, it's probably...
It's on here. Hibbert is 2.
I'm sorry.
It is?
Hibbert is 2.
I'm Phase 1, 2, and 3, yeah.
Right here.
Thorpe Park is 3.
Won't be the first time I ask a stupid question.
1, 1, 8, 2.
Or the last time.
Have you removed one of these tanks or vaults? Excavated?
Last 100 years.
No one's ever...
No, we've excavated pipe out of the ground, certainly, but not, not one of these stormwater storage facilities, no.
In large measure, would the, wouldn't these be much easier to remove than the tanks, say, at West Park? Not to pick on West Park, but that built, cast-in-place tanks, these are, we're going to be more or less set in place with some connectivity, but they can be broken and taken out in relatively easy chunks.
That is correct. These will be assembled more like Legos, almost.
We saw the crane, right? They can put them in, they can take them out.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's correct.
Any more questions?
I still have a few, I'm sorry. There's no, there's no order to this. Is there a, has the village, there's obviously been budgets thrown around. Do we, is there a budget that's been put to remediation or improvements to the park? Is there any sense of what that might be? I put you under the spot here, you don't have to answer it.
No.
And you didn't. All right. Hibbert is much closer to the west side. It's also one of the more problematic parks in terms of the give and take of what, you know, we can, we can find some synergies with regard to the community playfields in terms of fixing our drainage. We're not looking at that as a future park. It's like, yeah, you know, this could really, this could kind of work. Hibbert, on the other hand, we're kind of running at cross purposes here. It's also much closer to the west side, so in terms of a conveyance solution, if there was a park that I would point to and say, you know, can't we consider conveyance over here instead of storage? That's kind of the area of town that I would look at. I don't know what, I don't, you know, option one was just, no, option two was Thornwood and conveyance everywhere else. Option one was all conveyance. Option three was three, three tanks. There was no option two and a half, or something like that.
We did look at multiple, multiple permutations of all of these different alternatives. And one thing I can say, and this graphic here, again, is of the west side of the village, and it, it almost doesn't do justice to how far we need to take the stormwater west to the pump station.
Yeah.
In all cases, no matter what, what park we're looking at, it's several miles that we need to take that water to get it to that pump station. So that's, that's what drove the conveyance option, which was the alternative one. That's what really drove up the cost of that, was that we just simply needed to take the water so far towards the west to get it to the Lake Avenue Stormwater Pumping Station.
Well, I'm glad to be starting in community playfields. Like I said, it's probably going to be our easiest place to, you know, where we can find agreement, and again, find mutual benefits. But Hibbert is looming on the horizon, and not to, I'm concerned about it, but there's nothing more to ask about it now. I just don't want to lose track of it. I'm getting down there.
Can I ask a quick question while you're cogitating?
Absolutely, go ahead. Considering. What?
I was just asking if I could fill in the space with a quick question. At Hibbert Park, I know that you haven't, and I apologize for coming late, so I missed some of the discussion about it, but I know that the location is still to be determined. But ideally, in order to have your drainage without a pumping station, I would imagine you'd have to have a, a tank of a certain size, a certain number of square feet. Could you give us, just looking at it, is it the size of one of the baseball fields? Is it the size of one of the buildings? How big would be this 10-acre foot tank?
We don't know that.
If it was for natural flow?
What I can say is that it would be probably somewhat similar to the other two park sites. Thornwood here had, you know, both of them have approximately, you know, a 2-acre footprint, and they're designed to drain by gravity. That's Thornwood, and whether it's Centennial or Community. So that's probably the footprint, if we're going to gravity drain it, the footprint that we would look for.
Which is great, except that they're, they're all different scales. So I'm trying to figure out, on the picture that you have of Hibbert Park, approximately, how big would one of those 2-acre tanks you're talking about, how big would that be on that picture?
Because of, you know, Hibbert is down the road, we haven't even gotten to that point yet.
2 acres would be around 300 feet square. I don't know how that, I don't know how that works on that map, but...
You know, one of the things we can do is, and we've engaged Woodhouse, Tanucci, to help us look at Hibbert specifically, and we can, again, that's going to be part of what we're going to look at, is how it can get, how it can be laid out.
Steve, do you know how big Hibbert Park is? I could probably look it up. I don't have it off the top of my head. Jerry, who's in the room, I think? You don't have it either, off the top of your head?
But I would say if you did 2 acres, it would probably be in the south baseball field, from sidewalk to sidewalk, from park to park.
The one in Glenview is...
I have a question on this.
Yes.
Page. Oh, it's up here, okay. The pink, all of the pink, those are these additional alternate...
Size of a football field.
Three, what does it say? Three...
Like a hot stove.
Three storm sewer. But that's, I'm confused, but then over here it says Phase 1A Relief Sewer, and it's pointing to a couple of those, but just, can you tell me again what all the pink lines actually are?
Sure. So the pink lines are new storm sewers that we'll be putting in as part of this project.
Okay. So they're not there, they're currently not there?
There may be storm sewers there. They're likely not big enough, so we'd be putting in larger storm sewers.
Okay.
And...
That's part of the first phase of this project?
Well, the storm sewers will go in as the park site adjacent to them go in as well.
Oh, okay.
So, taking Thornwood Park as an example, so there's, you see some pink around Thornwood Park. Those would go in at the same time that the park project...
The third stage.
Correct.
So, because I saw the 1A up here, and I guess those are tying into either Centennial or the community playfield, not the Hibbert Park?
Correct. Those are separate on their own.
Okay.
I'll ask a question. So, if you could leave that up there.
Well, wait, I have one more on that.
Go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Brian. Let me rethink that.
I'm not sure how to ask this. But, so, we've got the blue of the existing pipes, and we're going to change the system. And would anybody see, and so, we store the water and we release it more slowly. But we're going to store a lot of water, a lot of water. And so, are those blue pipes which are existing, will they see more water going down there, or will they see less water going through them, or the same amount of water going through them? In other words, could somebody experience backups? Could this create problems to other residents?
No, it's, it's all the same amount of water that we're dealing with.
So the release from these tanks, and not to surcharge or overcharge any worse than they already are, right? You'll be, you're going to be careful in that.
That's correct.
Okay, that, I'm sure that's your business, not mine. I had, the only thing I wanted to add, really, it has to do with just next steps. Again, I want to make sure that the people who are being impacted by this, this is the first meeting, that they, people now around community playfields, you know, should, well, what are they going to do? And they're going, they have their right to come in and ask their questions, and that we move here with enough deliberation to allow our neighbors and residents to comment on the plans that are being presented and not be rushed into some sort of decision. I don't want to create any losers out of this.
Brian, let's, if I could ask my questions, and then we can have a discussion about the process.
Sure.
That would be helpful. Do you mind?
I'm done.
Okay. I just had a few, couple, a few questions. The other communities that have done these parks, have they had ever, I noticed in this, in your packet, it's mentioned several times expansion, which, that's the first time I've heard that these tanks could be expanded in the future. Is that what it means when possible expansion is in there?
So, it's not expansion in the future, it's expansion where we would, we would do it all at once. It was, it's whether we put in the, the base size, or we put in some larger size based on the optimization, but the plan would be that we put it in all at once.
So you would put it in with knowing that it could be expanded in the future?
We would put in the largest size...
That needed.
That needed at the same time.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like, in the future, you'd come back and be like, the tank at Playfields is not holding enough water, we need to add another one next to it, or something like that?
You're correct.
Okay.
It's not the intention to do that.
It's not like opening up a wall either, that's in there already. You're putting another Lego in. Right. If you go to the largest expandable underground area, it will, that will fill up from the day one, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And just to add, in one of the village meetings on the subject, when they decided that this was the option to go on, one of the potential benefits of this is that if it didn't work, if it wasn't sufficient, that the conveyance option could be added on top of it, if necessary, tremendous cost, and, you know, all that stuff. But I don't know that that would be the, the option that's preferable to expanding the storage facilities, but that, that's...
There's options to...
Yeah.
Okay.
A consideration.
So these other communities that have done this, do they also do other stormwater management, kind of like what you're proposing, these relief sewers, or any kind of other things as well to supplement the tanks?
Absolutely, yes. Because you have to take the water from where it's flooding the residents and get it to that, that facility, yes.
Okay, and they've found that to be effective?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the tanks, there's nothing above ground? I think we've said that before. It's just all, everything is below ground, no little buildings or anything like that at this point?
At this point, no.
At this point, nothing above ground, okay. At Thornwood Park, does the elevation there pose a problem? There's like, a slight hill there that it looks like the tank would kind of go into? Does that, is that part of the reason why it's a little pricier, and does that cause any issues with the tank?
Nope, we would be able to, that's, even though it is a couple, that hill is a couple of feet high, and you can see that hill...
Yeah, that's what, yep.
Yep, the contours represent a change in elevation. It's only a couple of feet, so we'd certainly be able to work around that.
Okay, and it wouldn't, like, would there be like, a retaining wall or something there in the end, or it would still just be a natural...
We can put it back.
You can put it back.
Yep.
You'd put it back, okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Just curious on that one. Would, if, if Hibbert continued to cause an issue of where to put it and things like that, could there be two tanks at the community playfields? Is that something that, if there was one on the west side of there, would that also serve that need, or is that too far from the neighbors that are west?
Hibbert Park is unique in that it is, of all the areas that experience the most severe flooding, Hibbert Park is, has the most residents in proximity that experience that flooding. So, we would like to see Hibbert Park work, just because it is in such close proximity. Hydraulically, it makes the most sense to try to use that.
Okay.
That is an area, like, I mean, if you look at that parking lot, now, I haven't asked staff this, they may say, Brian, don't, don't build on the parking lot, but I mean, it is a large parking lot in that area, so, again, like to, somebody tell me either why it doesn't work, or let's consider that.
But ironically, Hibbert Park isn't that far from West Park.
Right.
So there's no way to tie into that...
Well, it's two different systems.
I understand, right.
Yes, unfortunately, yeah.
And there's no room at West Park to sneak another tank in?
Well, and the highways are like, highways in the way. The highway is a formidable barrier.
Yeah. Again, it's, it doesn't look like it's far on the map, but when you start trying to run a pipe that distance, it's quite far.
Okay, I just have one final question. And then, as far as what can go on top of these, you mentioned before, parking lots and things like that, so we would, if it came around things like tennis, ice rinks, a track, like, all that kind of stuff could potentially go back on top of these without any kind of issue?
Yep. They're structurally designed for, you know, truck traffic and everything, so that would be an option.
Okay, perfect. That's my question. Does anyone have any...
Any kind of building on top of it, though? I mean, I know they can hold cars in a parking lot, but no building?
Yes, no buildings.
Okay, yeah.
Can you build a road on top of it?
Absolutely.
You can do a parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the village has a lot of roads.
It's the same.
Okay. Any other questions for...
I had a couple of follow-ups. So, I'm not sure who to address this to, but what are, where are we as a board being asked to decide?
Well, can we, yeah, let's, yeah, I think that's a good topic.
I don't know who they even ask it to.
So the...
Next steps is, I think that's what you're wanting to...
Yeah, that, like, after, yeah, after, yeah, I kind of want to talk about what our process is going to be moving forward, what information the village needs from us.
Okay, that's a good segue, maybe. I just don't know what we're being asked to decide.
Okay. Anybody else have any engineering kind of questions for the presentation? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as far as what our process is, there is no real process for this, because it's similar to West Park, but it's not West Park. I mean, as far as what we want to do, I think it's evident that we need to get some public input from everyone regarding these specific parks. And one of the things I spoke with Steve about today was to possibly have some public input meetings at our board meetings, so maybe one in January, one in February, one in March, and each time talking about a specific location that we're considering putting in a tank, yes.
I actually have a question that's relevant to this.
Yep.
Does this plan, these three plans, are they all tied together? In other words, is it necessary that all three of these be approved in order for this system to work? Again, anticipating that maybe we get into some discussions about Hibbert Park, is it, is it, do we have to, like, say, at least in concept, are we okay with all of these parks, or can we take these in a piecemeal manner?
They can be, certainly be looked at individually, but if we want to provide the amount of flood protection to the residents that the village board had decided on in April 2018, then we'd have to do all the parks.
And my follow-up on that is, is there a discussion of an either, are there any either-or's here? Is it either Centennial or Community Playfield? Is that true?
Yeah, that's the only either-or.
That's the either or, only either or.
That's how I understand it.
That is correct.
Correct.
You understand correctly, yes.
So is that something that the village needs to know from us tonight, as far as...
Our, excuse me, our municipal services committee is meeting on November 27 at 6:30 PM before the board meeting, and this same presentation will be given to those three trustees. So our commitment is to take any feedback from the park board and present it to our trustees at that time.
So let's maybe have a discussion at this point of what you all feel of Centennial versus Community Playfields. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to start with?
Simple.
Or we can just go around, and everybody...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Well, certainly, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist with regard to this, these concepts. I've come in here open-minded. I'd like to hear from the community. I don't feel that I'm in, yet. I'm not going to take the authority to approve anything with, until we get some community feedback. But if the choice simply is community or Centennial, it's pretty easy, it's going to be Community Playfields. But, you know, again, I, a problem of this complexity, I do want to hear from residents on that, so that's my thing.
Yeah, I think in terms of what to take back to the committee, it's pretty obvious. The leaning from at least this portion of board is, is obviously Community Playfield.
Okay. So, Community Playfields, I would go with the expert opinion, yes. Barry?
Yeah, no, the difference in the public's reception of it, the difficulty in the engineering of it, I think that there's a no-brainer to put it in Community Playfields.
John?
I'm not colorblind.
Yeah, Community Playfield. I'm curious, though, to know a little bit more about this easement process, on which, which Community Playfield option I would be more in favor of.
Okay. Okay. I also agree. I think the community playfields are a better option and could potentially help us with some stormwater management there as well, which I think is a good long-term outcome. So as far as that issue, I think that's where we would direct or give our comments back to the committee. Thanks.
How can we notify the people around the community playfield that this is now in consideration? Because it hasn't been...
Well, so, like I was just saying, I think I'd like to do these kind of community input meetings at our board meetings and have... So starting with January, and given that community playfields is the first phase, I think that should be the first meeting that we would have and invite anybody that would like to speak, but specifically those people that live around there to come and let us know how they feel about the project, what kind of things they'd like to see from the project, and how they'd like to see the park put back together.
Wise counsel.
Are we going to send them notices as we do with playgrounds, or would the village do that, or...
Not sure how that would...
Well, I think if it's our meeting, we should do the notification that the board would like us to do direct mailings to people within a certain distance of the park. We can definitely do that.
We might as well. Obviously, we'll work with the village on that, right?
Yeah.
Because would they... But for... To come to the park district meeting? I guess just for them to start to have the awareness, to send out the initial notice that it's something that is going to be, I don't know, discussed.
Yeah, I think it's not... It's a good request to ask the village board to publicize this on our behalf. We will also be meeting about these specific locations on these dates. That would be helpful. But we'll do it ourselves as well.
Correct.
Right. Right.
And then I'd like to recommend that February be the meeting that would discuss Hibbert, because that's Phase 2. And then the March meeting would be discussing Thornwood Park, because that's kind of the order that is presented here. And then hopefully, depending on how all the meetings went, to have some sort of intergovernmental agreement after that, after all the input from everybody and kind of where we're going.
Are you envisioning one intergovernmental agreement for each park, or an intergovernmental agreement for each... I'm sorry, for the whole project?
I guess that's a discussion that we would have. I don't know...
I mean, I would imagine that each one of them, we'd probably have...
Its own.
Yeah, its own. And we'll probably learn something along the way.
You couldn't put it all in one, because you need to have the details specific to each park.
I would imagine that's why... Because when Brian asked that question, is it... Does it... Is it 3... Is it 3... All 3 are necessary in order for it to be successful, right? So I guess that led me to that question.
But the amount of detail you need to write up the agreement, we're not going to be there for the second and third parks. I mean...
Right. The way that these are being proposed in the different phases, the second phase wouldn't begin until the first phase is completed. Is that correct? And so theoretically, this could be a 3-, 4-year project.
So in us having these meetings in the next 3 months, is that sensitive to your timeline? We were criticized or accused tonight of derailing the project, so I don't think that's any of our intention. And I just want to be sure we're being sensitive to any timeline.
I think my thinking of not doing it in December is only because of the holidays.
I agree.
I just think it's a crazy time to ask...
Considering we were given feedback tonight that we're getting in the way of this, I just want to ask the question to be sensitive and to be sure that none of us have that intention.
No.
We're trying to be helpful and cooperative.
Absolutely. I think we all agree that stormwater is a problem in Willmet.
Yeah. Thanks for the question, Commissioner Foster. We can absolutely work with that schedule, though.
Right.
While you're at the podium, one quick question on this question of like who to invite. There's a circle that says easement required, right, on the page. Has the village reached out to those residents yet? Do they have any idea that this is going on?
It would be premature. It would be premature, because we still... We needed to secure the location for the storage.
Yes, I would disagree that it's premature, because we're having a public meeting about it.
We have not.
Are there any other process questions that we need to discuss or anything else that we need to do moving forward as far as this goes?
I want to make one comment, and that is, I recognize several of the faces here from the village stormwater meetings, very interested residents who've been dealing with this for a long time. And I want you to know that we are trying to move as quickly as we can on this and still be reasonable to our mission, which is our park system as well as the neighbors. So thank you for coming. Thank you for your patience. And I'm sorry that we're going to have additional meetings that you may feel that you need to attend.
But I think it's important, as we've all, you know, discussed, we want to move this in a timely fashion, but also we want to do our homework and our due diligence and make sure that we're making good decisions with the input of the community so that in the long term, everybody is satisfied as they can be with this project. And hopefully, it solves a lot of issues for a lot of residents.
Yes.
Well, and I think it's important to remember that our role is the functionality of the parks during the construction and, most importantly, post-construction. Not, in my opinion, not the engineering of the vault. Like, I don't... I don't want to be on 2 boards dealing with 2 things. That's difficult. Those 2 things are really important to me on the park district board.
Okay.
How will we impact it during construction and how we will have a park at the end of this?
To that end, to Commissioner Foster's question, which of these 2 sites, I mean, one's right on Lake Avenue. It's not far away. I'm not really sure where the one in Northbrook is, but would you recommend visiting those in our spare time?
I don't think there's anything to see.
There's nothing to see. Is there any... There's nothing to see, is there?
Well, that's sort of the point.
One's a parking lot and one's a grass.
I mean, if you can't see it, that's the whole point.
Right, right.
Right? And we're all asking questions about what's it going to look like when it's done. If you can't even see that it's there, that's a good thing.
Hey, John, I live in Northbrook, and I played softball at West Scott Park for the last 30 years. And when you go by, you can't tell there's anything.
Yeah, I mean, this... This presentation makes it look like they got a better irrigation system and...
But, yeah, the gas is nice, and you can't tell there's anything there.
Which I think those are critical items that'll hopefully come out of some of our community input meetings, what people would like to see when the parks are put back together, you know?
Right. Like, that's what I'm interested in when the public comes to our meeting.
Right.
It's right across from Hackney's Unharnessed.
I understand.
Go for it.
Okay.
Sometimes you'll have to put up with a few questions as I try to get to the bottom of what I think I'm asking.
That's fine. I just think those questions are better suited at the village board meetings.
Okay. So given that this is a committee, the whole meeting, we can't vote on anything, but we can, you know, just come to consensus. I just want to make sure everybody's kind of in consensus of how we are moving forward with this process. Obviously, the staff will continue to have conversations with the village staff, and the village will communicate back to us as far as any decisions that come out of their committees or their board meetings. And I think that's kind of where we are at this point.
One follow-up I would like is that where... This is a very nice presentation on the Northbrook facility, so you can see where it is, right in the park. If there's something similar for the one in Glenview, which is a little bit more convenient to get to, it'd be nice to see that.
Okay. I don't know if that's something that I'm sure the village might have. Sorry. No, sorry, not a discussion. Sorry. Okay. Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
All right. Hearing nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks.